What's up? Um. Couldn't ask for better timing. Call the meeting in order, please rise for the pledge and they're off.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Our first item on the agenda is we have a K-12 math curriculum presentation. It's going to be Pasqual and Miss Elias. Move out of the way.
Good evening. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to present tonight. We're excited to share with you an overview of our K-12 math program across Glover'sville School District. This presentation will highlight the structure and progression of our math curriculum, key instructional practices, areas of strength and opportunities for growth. Our goal is to ensure that all students from kindergarten through graduation experience a coherent, rigorous, and supportive math journey preparing them for life. We're going to start with, we're going to, Christine and I are going to toggle back and forth between elementary and secondary, and we're going to start with the elementary core program or Tier One instruction. It's our Ready Classroom Math. That happens 60 minutes each and every day in our elementary classrooms. It emphasizes productive struggle and student engagement through discourse or just discussions. We have aligned our pacing across all grade levels, so it is not uncommon to be walking down a third grade hallway and hear the same lesson being taught in each classroom, ensuring that we can do common assessments as well. And we have this year focused on fidelity of using our core math program, Ready Math, and the resources that are associated with it.
For all scholars that take math in grade six through Algebra II, we are using EMAT Solutions or EMAT Instruction, which you can see here is standards aligned, which is great because that means we can ensure all of our scholars are exposed to next-gen standards starting in sixth grade right through that Algebra II curriculum. It's scaffolded, meaning each lesson builds off of one another, and the program itself builds in a spiraling effect, so there's consistent review of that important material. There's a built-in assessment plan. Because we are starting to formalize our formative assessment practices with regular data review, it allows us to consistently track student progress from one assessment to the next to ensure that we are preparing them for those state assessments, whether it be sixth or eighth assessments or the Algebra I, Geometry, or Algebra II Regents exam. And then the program itself also does at the end have that built-in assessment practice. So the consistency from sixth grade right through Algebra II is very important because the program does have the same structure. It is very rigorous, I will tell you that. It is language-heavy, so the work that the elementary campus is doing to support language development is only going to help our math program in grade six through Algebra II. It's not on here, but those scholars that take an introductory level class or a Supa course are not using this because there are other programs that are either provided through Supa, CHS, those kinds of things, or we in-house develop our intro classes to build those foundation-level skills to prepare them for their Regents-based courses.
So we also offer targeted support in Tier Two and Tier Three instruction at the elementary level. That looks like our WIN period. In grades K through two, WIN time is 30 minutes each day. There is flexible grouping happening there, so some students or scholars may stay right in their classrooms and work with their homeroom teachers, while others might be in skill-specific groups focusing on those specific foundational skills that they may need extra support with. We continue to work on data collection processes at the K-2 level, so we can monitor, progress monitor, that student growth. And we do emphasize that transition from second to third grade, making sure that those foundational skills are in place, so when they come to Boulevard, they're ready for that next level of instruction. For grades three through five, we really dove in this year with another diagnostic assessment. So we continue to use our screening assessment in math, but the Acadience Math Assessment really dials into specific skills that scholars might need support with. So those are skills that teachers may not recognize right off the bat. So if a student has maybe memorized their subtraction facts, but have a difficulty with subtraction with borrowing, that's going to really show up when they're trying to do long division, for example. So what we did with the, what we're doing with the Acadience's Math Assessment is really fine-tuning those specific skills, so if they need help with subtraction with borrowing, that they can work on that skill, and then there's a skill progression that happens after that. Our math coach, Lacy, has worked with myself and the entire staff of Boulevard to put that in place and really support that WIN instruction. Really, we want to make sure our foundational skills, fact fluency from fifth grade to sixth grade are in place. Also, we provide really targeted small group instruction for students that are more than one grade level behind. Those groups are really five students or less. They are really intensive skill support and really focused on closing that foundational gap. Also during WIN, it's not noted on here, but we also have our on-grade level and above-grade level groups that are continuing to accelerate.
At the secondary level, we utilize the AIS model to provide Tier Two intervention. At the middle school level, it looks like focused skill development, small group instruction, and ongoing progress monitoring. So those scholars are provided academic intervention during a learning lab. Some scholars are in a learning lab, while others are getting AIS math or ELA at the same time based on test scores. At the high school campus, we have two different approaches that we use. Both of them would qualify for AIS, they're just named differently, so that the scholar understands the difference. AIS is utilized for those scholars that already successfully passed that Regents course, but maybe didn't get through the exam. So I'm taking AIS algebra if I was able to complete the credit-bearing portion, but I have a little bit of work to do in regards to skill development to get through the exam. The math lab is for those scholars that are currently in the program and also showing the need for a little bit of support to successfully complete the credit-bearing portion of the class. Also, I guess I'll point out too, it's not necessarily a Tier Two intervention, but at the secondary level, mainly at the high school, we provide students access to the course that is most appropriate to their level. So all of our Regents-level classes also have an intro class that a scholar can take if they're just needing more time to develop skills before entering into that Regents-based course, which is considered a Tier One instruction, but it is at their ability level.
So I wanted to speak briefly about the assessment system that we have at the elementary level. It is triangulated, so we really focus on these three main assessments. We have the iReady Benchmark, that all K-5 students, that is our math screener. The Acadience Skill Assessment is what I spoke to, so it's really a diagnostic tool, so we can really fine-tune that instruction that we do during math WIN time. That does say, Gary, it's three through five, because that is where it's established right now at Boulevard. And most likely, it will push down, not all the way like down to kindergarten, but maybe into second grade where we are looking to dial in some of those skill needs at that second grade level. And then, of course, we still have a Ready Classroom Math Assessment that the teachers do after units and lessons. We use all of that data to, no, that's great, for instructional groupings, that's all.
At the secondary level, a lot of the work that I've been doing this year has been to lay the foundation for consistent assessment practices to be utilized in grades six through 12 for the four core. Specifically for math, because they're all in a structured program, they already have those common assessments, so now it's just pulling apart the data to make sure we're making those informed instructional decisions to utilize our class time to maximize the output or student scores, if you will. A lot of that comes with using our resource with Fidelity, which is going to be a continued focus to allow us to have those formative assessments happening at the same time, so that we're comparing students to students in that exact moment. And then also continuing to use Jay Jerebek, who is our data coach, to highlight our priority standards, so that we're able to make the most informed decisions about what to teach when, and which standards to slow down and take the most time on to ensure that our students are able to show improved test scores. I added to this slide the middle school honors program because it did recently undergo some changes. We added the sixth grade honors class this year. So that is just something we want to make sure we're keeping an eye on, that we're making sure that we're aware that it's going to need shifts and changes to make sure that it is structured the best it possibly can be. This year, we're looking to test more than just a designated group of students and potentially test the entire fifth grade population to allow all students to show us what they know in that moment, so that we can select any student that is wanting to be challenged, because I think it's really important to allow them to show us that they'll rise to the occasion versus tell them that they can't.
This slide highlights some of the focus areas that the K-1 and grades two through five have really tried to dial in with the Ready Math Program. In K-1, their focus was really on hands-on learning. That was done in a centers-based format, and they really started to build a centers resource library for teachers along with Lacy, our math coach. In grades two through five, it's a different way of teaching math, the Ready Math Program. And to really get its full potential, we have to continue to evolve as teachers, right? So a typical lesson plan format would be I do as the teacher, we do, and then you practice on your own. But if you flip that, that's really what Ready Math is asking us to do. It's really you do. You try it on your own. Struggle with that a little bit. Understand where you are in this learning process, and the teacher will be there to help and facilitate. That next step is the we do, then you have productive conversations with your peers. What did you get? How did you try to do it? Oh, we got the same answer, but we did it in two different ways, right? That's where that scholar dialogue comes in, and we really have to foster those discussions with students, because that's how this, that's how some of those connections really start to grow. And then I, as the teacher, can come in at the end and actually show you multiple pathways to getting to that solution. So that's the ready, that's the ready program format. So it takes, it's taken teachers some time to get all those pieces put into place, and that's been our focus this year, and will continue to be our focus for next year.
So something that we worked at the sixth through 12th grade level is on walkthroughs and making sure that we're focusing on those high-quality instructional practices. We identified these as a secondary administrative team as to what we will be looking for for the second portion of the school year when we begin those walkthroughs, just to make sure that we are collecting that consistent data on what is happening within our classrooms, so that we're able to then leverage that to make those informed decisions around professional development that you'll see here in a minute, and just having that feedback loop with staff to make sure that we're aware of how are we integrating vocabulary, because we know that's such a crucial piece, and it's something that our staff identifies consistently as an area of struggle. So we need to be purposeful with implementing it into our, into our classrooms, as well as the other ones. But this was our first set of walkthrough data points that we were collecting on this year to kind of help us move towards a consistent, high-quality form of instruction.
From the professional development and support side of this, like I said, it takes some movement to adjust our teaching to match what's happening with the Ready Math Room, our Ready Math Classroom. We did that with some Ready Classroom Math implementation, professional development, right from the Ready Math folks. And we combined that with Lacy, our math coach, to structure our math WIN time so that it's most effective. I did put in here that we, we do have some technology tools, and we do have some digital tools that support our scholars. These are vetted, and we think that they're strong, but we really wanted to make sure that students aren't getting an exceptional amount of screen time. We have really excellent teachers and support staff, and having those folks work directly with our students, we feel, is a better use of their instructional time. So we do have access to technology and some digital resources, but we really try to prioritize that person-to-teacher, student-to-teacher interaction. And we continue to work with Lacy, our math coach, on building that centers and some coaching in the classroom.
So obviously, I think the presentation highlights the fact that a lot of our resources and professional development have been targeted towards our elementary classrooms up until this point, which makes sense, right? We need to build our foundation and then move it forward into the secondary campuses so that we can send along prepared learners. But I'm excited because I think a lot of our focus moving into next year is going to be how do we make that shift and move it into the secondary campuses? We're talking about how do we integrate the coaching model into the secondary campuses, because I think we have staff that are open to growth, but we have to give them access in order to be able to do that. We're looking to work with Sam Fini, which I was extremely excited about. I got to participate with Dr. Ojesski and Mr. Halloran with Sam Fini to talk about how we can target our professional development offerings to secondary staff to provide them to access, access to resources that we have not yet been able to do, which I think will allow us to really have our goal, which is to enhance teacher growth. And then with that, obviously, would come scholar outcomes. We have a very hard-working staff at the secondary campus, so we kind of need to respond to that by providing them with the resources that they need to continue to grow, to allow the scholars to grow as well. So that's going to be a huge shift, is how do we really focus on the instructional practices that are taking place so that we have growth within students in our classrooms?
That does it for us. Did you have any questions?
No questions. I just wanted to say, great presentation. There's a lot there, definitely understand there's a lot there, but I'm excited because it's the, it's the most coordinated, cooperative, encompassing math initiative in the seven years I've been here. This is a, it's a big effort, clear what we're doing. The administrative team works well together, element, elementary and secondary level. Really excited with this program and implementation with Fidelity, along with what we're doing with CKLA and the heavy literacy components of this. We're hopeful that we're going to see growth. And the professional development piece is obviously critical, and the buy-in from the teaching staff, and parents have to send their kids to school. Got to have, got to have them here, because if you don't see anything except two, three days of misinstruction with the amount of emphasis on each and every day and that 60 minutes of math instruction, especially at the elementary level, kids can't afford to miss multiple days. So great job, guys. I'm excited to see this work develop.
Next item on the agenda is public comment. Do we have anybody here for public comment tonight?
Okay, yeah, so I'm just going to speak loudly. I'm Arjun Fagel, I represent the Glover'sville Teachers Association. I want to say thank you for all of the love and support, the messages, the treats, the gifts for Teacher Appreciation Week last week, so thank you.
Go ahead, pull more back there.
Do I come up?
You should, come on.
My name is Harmony Barkwitz Reyes. Some of you may have heard my dilemma I'm in at the moment. I am looking to walk at graduation as a homeschool student. I've been in this district as a student since pre-K. I have gone to in-person schooling here since, from then until COVID happened. I then learned I functioned better in a different form of learning. I fly better there. Being in-person was holding me back. I am looking to feel included in a space where my peers support me. I have many students that go in-person that want me to walk with them. They see me as a member of their student class. I was able to go to homecoming, I was able to go to prom as a student of the school, not as a guest. I was directly sold tickets to go. I'm able to participate in extracurricular activities. But for other reasons, I have been denied the right to walk at graduation. I'm not looking for a Glover'sville High School diploma. I'm looking for my diploma of equivalency for earning all of the credits that I have acquired over my high school career. I don't need to be considered a Glover'sville High School graduate. I'm looking to just feel included with my classmates that I have grown up with.
No, I think you covered it.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment tonight? All right, move on to the next item, which is board discussion. We have the minutes from the April 8th and the April 30th. I will vote on those separately, just due to attendance, probably. Any questions or comments on either of those minutes? Motion to approve the April 8th meeting minutes. Motion by Ed, seconded by Heath. All in favor of those? Do we have enough to approve?
I need one more person to approve. Okay, thanks.
All right, and then we have the minutes from the April 30th meeting. Appalled by Kevin, seconded by Ed again. All in favor of those? Anyone have anything else for board discussion tonight?
Just real quick, I don't know the outcome of the conversation, but kudos to you, because that's a pretty hard conversation to have with a bunch of people you don't know. And like, just kudos to you. I appreciate that conversation, so that's all.
All right, anyone else? All right, move along to the next item, which is the superintendent's report.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Happy belated Mother's Day to all the moms out there. Before I get into the report, just a few things. One, want to recognize Kelly DeMaio. The one who has recognized Kelly for her confirming more than 250 points for ongoing association, professional development, and/or accepting leadership roles. Nice little binder. One compliment here. I don't have any retirements to point out, but I do have a donation to point out, and the donor is actually here. We have a $1,000 donation from Teresa Bushy to be used in the backpack program. It's a pretty significant personal donation, Teresa, and we really appreciate your generosity. I don't have a whole lot to report, just want to say that the hiring is indicative by this agenda. I think there's six or seven teachers on this agenda alone. So that's what Dr. Ojesski and I are doing a lot of, our building administration and students' work administrators as well. So moving very long, and I also appreciate the instructional and support staff that are taking part in those interviews and the first rounds. So we, we're pretty excited. We think we have a lot of good candidates that are going to be joining us in the next few months. Most starting in September, a few starting a little sooner. But all in all, it's still a challenging hiring environment, but we're happy because we're, we're being assertive and kind of move the timeline of hiring. Early bird gets the worm is, is our, is the thought process, so I don't want to vacillate on these, on this process. To the point where Mrs. Graham has changed today's agenda numerous times. Appreciate the board's flexibility. It is about getting people approved, and hopefully, they stop searching for other jobs. So that is why she sent out numerous iterations of tonight's agenda. Appreciate the flexibility. Budget, just want to thank Kathy again. For anybody watching this meeting at home who has not watched the budget presentation, I hope you take the time to do so or read it. The newsletters will be going out in the mail. I want to thank her and Chris, Dr. Ojesski, for their leadership in creating that document. As I said to the reporter from Leader Harold, it is a no-frills budget. There are no new instructional positions in this budget. It's, it's about being competitive, it's about insurance, safety, and running the basic functions of a school district in 2025. These propositions that are on here, I also want the taxpayers to pay attention to those. Well, there's four in addition to our budget. You have the library budget, which is separate. We just agreed to try to help them out by putting them on our budget, annual budget. So hopefully, that works out well for them. It is a separate piece. But the other three, the transportation purchases, the student desks and musical instruments, and the computer monitors and charging stations, upgrades of the infrastructure. Again, those are all funded by reserves that are not impacted by the tax base. I think that's really critical, and those are critical pieces of the puzzle. There's no frills in any of that. It's transporting kids safely, it's ensuring that the, the personal identifying information of our kids and our staff members are protected. It's medical information, that's personal social security numbers, birthdays. And we all know in the environment we live in, with the rogue nation-states using AI to try to attack public entities and put your information on the dark web and try to get ransom out of you to get your personal information back. So investing in that is intelligent, investing in desks makes sense. We have desks in high school that were here when I was a student, 30-some-odd years ago. And I was in a high school classroom the other day, visiting with a teacher, and just feeling backs on chairs and removing multiple desks out of his classroom, because I said, "These aren't safe." The backs of them are split, I don't want kids sitting down and scraping their backs on them. And I'm looking at the chairs, thinking, "I sat in these chairs 30-something years ago." So I think this is all common sense stuff that we're asking from the taxpayers, and I hope they appreciate that. And certainly, as Kathy said in her presentation, we're willing to answer any questions folks have about this budget. We're within the tax cap. The board's been very careful, I think, over the years, and responsible in funding these reserves, keeping a healthy fund balance to offset when the governor removes 700,000 or the legislature removes 700,000 from the governor's proposal, and we're still fiscally in a good position. It's a testament to Kathy and the Board of Education over the years. And to have these reserves ready to replace furniture, replace buses, and keep our IT infrastructure healthy, that's, that's a, that's a credit to this organization. Thank you for your leadership, and Kathy, thank you for your leadership in presenting this budget. Educational Foundation, just want to give a shout-out. Chris is heading up our committee and Sharon as well. Part of the Glover'sville Educational Foundation to get our Hall of Fame off the ground. We know that we had one once upon a time through the district. Comptroller's Office said district can't fund those types of things. So this is something that the Glover'sville Educational Foundation is, is picking up and running with. And we look forward to possibly an inaugural event in the fall.
Fall, sometime early winter, possibly.
Great. So I like, Sharon had a great idea about identifying Glover'sville graduates who have excelled in various fields, you know, with some of it is, is, I think, industry, other is philanthropy.
Sports, business.
Music.
The arts.
The arts. So we're pretty excited. I think it'd be great. Glover'sville's certainly put out a lot of quality people over the decades that this district has existed, and I think it's great that we're going to take, take steps to recognize and celebrate them.
Let's not forget education.
What's that?
A lot of great graduates from education.
That's true, that's true. A lot of superintendents out of Glover'sville.
Yeah.
Seen Tom Dodger, Richard Burdy, Dave Blanchard, myself, South Glens Falls.
Christine.
Christine Or. Yep, so that's just in Section Two right now alone. I know there's people outside of New York State who are also in this administration. That's just superintendents, not to mention teachers and building-level administration. People might be wondering, they probably heard that Cody Hedwell is going to be our new high school principal, and it's not on tonight's agenda. Cody's a tenured administrator in this district, and it's a transfer. So that's why there's no appointment for Cody on this agenda. And he asked, "Should I come tonight?" I said, "Not necessary, you've got two little ones he's home with." Cody has, like, received tenure in recent years, and, excuse me, recent, like, last board meeting. I did have a conversation with the high school staff and told them why the process was pretty short, and there was not a lot of inclusivity in that process, because we didn't really have a process. We had three applicants, interviewed one that we thought was viable, and went with what we thought was the best decision to move forward. Obviously, his position, current position is posted. Hopefully, we get a larger candidate pool, and there will be an inclusive process if we have decisions to make and want to hear back from staff of what they think of these candidates. So when possible, we are putting committees together. When it's not really feasible, I'm not just going to put it together and waste people's time if the process is, is already a done deal. So any questions on that? Because I know some people are like, "Why, gee, how can we do it this way this time?" But normally, you would have a committee together. It's really about the, we have local districts that have gone out. Currently, Fonda's under third attempt to fill a middle school principal position. I think Northville's got openings administratively, Broadoben Perth has got openings administratively. Not enough people are going into this administration, and we can say the same about teaching as well. Where we used to get multiple, multiple, multiple applicants for these positions, we're getting a handful, sometimes none. That's why the state keeps on extending the retiree waiver for how much money they can make, and they've extended it two more years in this latest budget. And we are dependent upon retirees as we speak. We encourage the state to look at this, because it is a real problem in our profession. I don't know how long retirees are going to continue to want to work, regardless of how much money you throw at them. And I've had these conversations with retirees, where they're like, "I'm done. Okay, how much are you offering me?" Retired for a reason. So it's, it's a quiet crisis. I've talked to our Assemblyman, Mr. Smollett, on it. He is well aware, certainly was supportive about the extension of that retiree waiver, because they were talking about removing it, and that would have been catastrophic, frankly, across the state. And my last piece is Board of Education participation on Thursday. And my last piece is Board of Education participation on Thursday morning. I know Sharon signed up. Is anybody else able to attend? Bill Daggett's presentation. Okay. Me and you, Chris, you're going. We have administrative contingent going. Some of our administrative team is going, so it should be pretty good. Bill Daggett's obviously internationally renowned expert in our field, who's always on the cutting edge of the relevance of what we're trying to impart and inspire our children to be able to do. No questions for me. That concludes my report, and I do not have any need for an executive session unless the board wishes to.
Yeah.
Exact?
This is short.
Okay. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Student board member and the alternate both unavailable tonight, so we can skip that item, move right into recommended action. We have items 7.01 through 17.10. Any questions? Anybody need anything? Motion to approve those by Kelly, seconded by Mike. All in favor? Personnel?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Motion to go into executive session to discuss a personnel item. Motion for executive by Heath, seconded by Kelly. All in favor on that? And there will be no action taken afterwards. Thank you, everyone.